Good morning. I want to call to order the February 15th meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present in the NatU Hill Room. And we'll start with our commissioner's public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And now we will move on to department updates. Is Ms. Kelly with us?
Yes. Good morning. Monroe County remains in the low community level. As of February 11, XBB 1.5 has accounted for around 75% of the U.S. cases. About 65% of U.S. wastewater surveillance testing sites are reporting moderate to high virus levels. Wastewater surveillance reports from City of Bloomington and other labs show virus levels at Monroe County's two wastewater sites are trending upward.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Are we starting our own testing at this point?
With Indiana University, I think they are still working on that, on getting that testing up and going and training the lab personnel.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
And is it through the wastewater testing that we're determining what the local viruses, you know, what strains we're seeing? Is that how that's being done?
Yes, that is correct. So the data that we pulled today is from the City of Bloomington, so Blue Turpul and Dillman, as well as pulling reports from the CDC and Biobot. That is what is reflective of the 65% that we are seeing now.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other departments that have an update for us? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is for items which are not on the agenda. We have a limit of three minutes per speaker, and if you wish to speak, please state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Monroe County. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to approval of minutes.
I move approval of minutes for February 8, 2023.
Second.
Are there any comments or corrections?
No, I don't.
No.
I had one correction that's been taken care of already, so I really appreciate that. Okay. Call for vote on approval of the minutes, all for February 8, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the claims docket accounts payable February 15, 2023.
Second.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. The report. We need the report, sorry. Thank you. It has been a day already for many of us. Yes.
Good morning, commissioners. Accounts payable for February 15, 2023 is $8,751,970.60.
Now, are there questions or comments? Now, I went through all 44 pages, and it was quite a lot this week. Yes. Okay. If there's no comments or questions, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Call for vote, approval of the claims docket for accounts payable February 15, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. I will note for the record that we have a report from the treasurer for January of 2023. Move on now to new business.
I move approval of the 2023 primary election day poll sites.
Second.
And we have Ms. Martin with us. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies. As you see before you, this is our poll sites for the primary. We have the 18 for the city and Town of Ellisville election.
Thank you. And these were approved by the election board, is that correct?
That is correct, last week.
Is there any comment or question?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas? Is there any public comment on this? I noticed when I read through it, there are a lot of school locations, and so I want to thank our school districts for making that possible because we know that those are ADA compliant, and that's always a big thing, and parking is accessible, so this is fabulous. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the 2023 primary election day poll sites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the agreement with Indus International, Inc., fund name county general, fund number 1,000, the amount of $3,250.
Second.
And again, we have Ms. Martin.
This is our book scanner at the clerk's office. It's a high-tech device that takes pictures of our old books from multiangles and that gives us a searchable index. This is the agreement that we have with them that basically covers any maintenance during that, let's say that the glass would break on the equipment, they would cover that for us. The cost is $3,250 a year, and it runs from January 2023 to December 31, 2023.
So we're digitizing our records?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Comments or questions?
That's always a good thing to do.
No comments.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the agreement with Indus International. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the Midwest Pre-Sort Agreement for 2023 primary and general elections. Fund names, election and county general, fund numbers 1215 and 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $31,500 per year, at $12 and $12 per day.
Second.
Okay, this is our company that we hire to pick up our ballots. If we send our ballots to regular mail, it takes about seven days to get them to the individual. This company comes every day during early voting and picks up our ballot, takes them to Indy, does the pre-scanning, and the voter actually gets the ballot within two to three days. The one that says $12 a day goes to the clerk's office, and that is when Midwest picks up our mail at the clerk's office and does the same procedure. On an early voting election, you'll see that it says not to exceed $31,500. We put that, we pay that in for postage, and whatever we don't use, they reimburse the county general fund.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Is there a public comment on this item? I appreciate the fact that absentee, people who wish to vote by absentee mail-in ballot get their ballots in a timely manner so that they can get them back in time for them to be counted in the election. So all those in favor of the Midwest Pre-Sort Agreement for 2023 primary and general elections signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Have a good day.
Thank you. And I also want to remind you that we have ballot viewing today at Election Central. You may have heard a lot of noise in the background. We've had a nice turnout this morning, and come on down and look at the ballot.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2022-04, highway surplus property.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here to tell us about this.
Good morning, commissioners. Richard Kreider, Fleet and Facilities Manager. This request is to approve the surplus of three pieces of equipment for the Monroe County Highway Department. Inventory item 81, a 1987 Fiat Crawler, estimated value $10,000. It's been replaced with new. Inventory item 89, 1998 Galion Komatsu Greater, estimated value $20,000, replaced with new. Inventory item SW08, 2001 Chevrolet Silverado K1500, estimated value $500. It's been replaced with new. This equipment will all be sold at auction.
Thank you. Questions?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions. Thank you.
I do appreciate seeing the pictures. The visuals always help me, so I appreciate that. Is there any public comment on this item? And these will be sold at auction?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 2024, surplusing highway property, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kreider.
You're welcome.
Next item.
I move approval of an agreement with Lamar Billboards for Safe Place. Fund name, runaway homeless youth. Fund number 8120, in amount of $9,050.
Second.
And we have Ms. McCammon here to tell us about it. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Cassidy McCammon, and I am the new Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator for Youth Services Bureau. We are again working with Lamar Billboards this year to promote Safe Place throughout Monroe, Owen, and Green Counties. Well, two billboards will be placed, one in Owen and one in Green. This is to specifically address the runaway and homeless youth grant that asks us to focus on the rural communities that we serve. Lamar has given us a goodwill rate. They've cut production costs from $1,200 to $600, and these billboards can be moved at any time throughout the counties. They're estimating that these billboards will give us about 8,000 impressions per week, and they will be up from March 2023 until March 2024. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, this is something we've seen repeatedly.
No, it's a nice, long time span, too, so it's good.
Thank you.
Yes, and I want to thank Lamar Billboards for giving us a cut rate on the production, especially.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the Lamar Billboards Agreement for Safe Place. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of National Cinema Media Agreement for Safe Place. Fund name, runaway and homeless youth. Fund number 8120, in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
And again, Ms. McCammon.
Good morning again. So National Cinema Media, NCM, this is also a repeated part of our outreach strategy. They use both in-theater advertising and streaming advertising to educate and promote awareness about Safe Place. They run the ad before every PG-rated movie, and then they play the ad in the lobby every 12 minutes. There will be, specifically for in-theater advertising, they are doing that for the eight weeks over the summer months that the kids will be out of school. And then in playing the ad in the lobby and the streaming ads will be 32 weeks from May 22 to December 31. So the digital component of the streaming, they call it OTT and CTV. I'm not quite sure what that means, but basically what that means is that they would be showing ads through Hulu, Amazon Prime, those streaming services, on devices that have been in a theater recently.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Any public questions on this? Again, I think it's a great service and appreciate you taking care of this. All those in favor of approving the agreement with National Cinema for Safe Place signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. McCammon. Next item.
I move approval of the Butler Fairman Seaford, Inc., supplemental number one, for Cars Farm Greenway. Fund name, 2020 GeoBond Trail Expansion, fund number 4813, in the amount of $8,065.
Second.
And we have Ms. Ridge here to tell us about it.
Good morning. After we changed the direction of the trail extension to a southern piece of property, it will require an additional right-of-way acquisition for two parcels. So the engineering for the right-of-way and appraisals is $8,065 to include those two extra parcels.
Great. Thank you. Questions or comments?
No, I'm just glad this is moving forward.
Appreciate the tenacity. Yeah, you never let go of something, do you?
Try not to. Not with today's prices.
Ooh, yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I call for a vote on approving the Butler Fairman Seaford supplemental for number one for Cars Farm Greenway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of an agreement with Lock Mueller Group for the Bicentennial Trail. Fund name, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, fund number 1138, in the amount of $100,300.
Second.
Ms. Ridge again.
So the original contract for this project was completed in 2020. It was an anticipated construction season of 2021. The first time it went to letting, it was unawardable due to the cost of the project. It has now gone back to letting. It went in December. You'll have a contract after this one for the construction and to move forward with that project. The increase of the contract is $100,300, which it's only 7.4% of the overall actual construction cost, which is very low for a typical project and what we see. So we're glad Lock Mueller worked with us on this additional cost.
Yeah. Thank you. Comments? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm glad this worked out.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, it really is a bargain, so good work.
Yes. I have no questions or comments. Ms. Purdy, did you have something?
Yes. Sorry. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood that this is an additional amount, so the total is 300 and some thousand for this component. Just wanted to make sure that...
336 is the grand total. You had already approved the 235, 235,700.
Yes. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Lock Mueller Group Agreement for the Bicentennial Trail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of INDOT Amendment Number Four for Bicentennial Trail Phase One. Fund name, Cumulative Capital, fund number 1138, in the amount of $4,724,417.07.
Second.
Ms. Ridge again. Thank you.
Okay. Again, this project actually began in 2009 as the Unionville Rail Trail. So we had to change the direction of that project in 2016 due to the terrain on the west side, on the east side, not being able to accommodate that trail expansion. Again, this is the project that went to letting in May of 2022. It was then moved to December 2022 letting. The cost of the project both times came in a little over $2.5 million over what the engineer estimate is. So INDOT reached out to us, and if we were able to pay our local match of the 20%, they would step up and increase the amount of, to make it an 80/20 project. So this is for that additional $2.5 million increase to complete the project. It has been awarded, and we actually have our first pre-construction meeting on Monday.
Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
It's just been a long time coming.
Can you clarify the dollars which are coming from cumulative capital, which are coming from INDOT?
Yes, she has to clarify the dollars coming from CUM. So this is a reimbursable grant, and CUM is going to have to pay up to the $4,724. However, we'll get that reimbursed. I think the project itself is like $6 million.
So the overall project from 2009 is, has been estimated over a little, over $6 million. The construction portion of it, INDOT bills us for 20%, which is actually being paid out today. That is our portion of the construction. The construction inspection, we will pay out 100% out of the CUM cap, which actually will be a grant fund, turned into a grant fund. We pay 100% of that cost, and then we are reimbursed the 80% from INDOT for construction inspection.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. I do want to note that we did pay the $900,000 that was not budgeted, actually. So CUM has taken a bit of a hit for 2023, and we'll probably continue to do that through 2023, maybe 2024, but just so we are clear.
I have a quick question. First of all, 14 years, that's an incredible length of time to stay on top of a project. But what's the length of that portion of the trail that...
It actually, I don't have the exact length off the top of my head. But I will tell you, it goes from the Bloomington City lemons, which is about Audubon Drive, and it goes right below Fire Station Hill, right past the fire station. It's overall drainage improvements, shoulder widening, and it's basically to help alternative transportation in that area, getting towards the, the originality of this project was to get the bicyclists pedestrians towards Lake Lemon. So there could be future phases of this project, not at this point, just because we are pretty well stretched to the limit on the dollars, but the goal would be next to go to like a Robinson Road and then out to Tunnel Road. So that was how this project originated.
Wow. It's a great project.
Yes, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? I think all the people who choose to cycle out there will really appreciate this.
Yeah, it's a big project, but it'll be nice when it's completed.
Yes. Okay, so I call for a vote on the INDOT Amendment Number Four for the Bicentennial Trail Phase One. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
Move approval of the INDOT Community Crossing Matching Grant Agreement for various paving projects. Fund name, Rainy Day, fund number 1186, in the grant amount of $835,759.30.
Second.
Ms. Ridge again.
So twice a year, INDOT does a call for projects for community crossing matching grant. This is actually the award from our July submittal of 2022. The roads that are included in this is Steinsville Road from State Road 46 to Mount Carmel Road, Harmony Road from State Road 45 to Rockport Road, Chapel Hill Road from State Road 446 to Guthrie Road, and Union Valley Road from West Maple Grove to DeLapp. It's a total of 10.78 miles. At this time, the crews are out replacing any necessary pipes, doing ditching to prepare these roads. We've already put them out for bid. A contractor has been awarded, and as soon as the asphalt plant opens and they can put it in their schedule, these roads will be completed this summer.
Thank you. Comments? Questions?
No, I don't.
None.
I'm sure that the people that, especially those who are residents in that area, will appreciate the repaving. People ask why things take a while between the repavings. It's very expensive.
Very expensive.
Especially because you're not just going out and laying the asphalt, you're doing the other things for the drainage and whatnot. So is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the INDOT Community Crossing Matching Grant Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Next item.
Move approval of Ordinance 2023-08, Steinsville Rezone.
Second.
And we have Mr. Myers here to talk to us about it. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm glad, share my screen for a presentation here. Okay. All right, so this is the Steinsville Rezone. It's broken up into three parts. That was how it was taken to the plan commission. There's essentially Part A, which is a rezone request from general business to high-density residential. It includes six parcels totaling 1.5 acres in Bean Blossom Township, Section 17, at the addresses and parcel numbers that you see on the screen. And then there's Part B, which is four parcels totaling 0.64 acres in Bean Blossom Township, Section 17. And those parcels are also requesting to go in from general business to high-density residential, and those specific parcels in Part B are actually currently vacant parcels. Part C is two parcels totaling 4.14 acres in Bean Blossom Township, Section 16, and that request is going from agricultural rural reserve to institutional public. And those two parcels are adjacent to the former school site and also involve the existing fire station in Steinsville. Okay, so here we have the plan commission's recommendation. This was heard during the January 17 Plan Commission meeting, where the Plan Commission voted seven to zero to forward this petition with a positive recommendation to the county commissioners. There were no conditions of approval attached at that time. So here's a little bit of the background. Again, Part A is going from general business to high-density residential, as is Part B. Both of those combined, 10 parcels total. The purpose of Part A and Part B is to provide the appropriate zoning designation for residential uses along West Main Street. Part C is a rezone request, agricultural reserves, institutional public. And that is, the intention behind that is to clean up the split zoning in the area and have a reduced lot size requirement to accommodate a future subdivision that is going to be going in for the fire station, so that it can sit on its own unique property. If approved, the petitioner, the town of Steinsville, and the individuals that own those lots that are in question will have a more suitable zoning designation for residential development for that area. Part A is a lot of residential lots currently acting as residential. And again, like I said, Part B is vacant parcels. So currently, along West Main Street, anywhere that's general business, any type of residential use existing or not existing would be pre-existing non-conforming or not permitted, respectively. There also, if approved, there would be a more suitable zoning designation for the existing fire station, as well as a minimum lot size requirement that fits with the existing fire station and that super, that future, excuse me, subdivision that will be occurring through the town of Steinsville to put them on their own lot. Okay, so if denied, Parts A and Parts B, the petitioner, town of Steinsville, and those individuals that own those properties may continue to operate the properties under the general business zone. However, much of the existing uses will remain pre-existing non-conforming or not permitted at all if it's residential. If denied for Part C, the fire station may continue to operate under the Agarrr Zone as it is permitted use in that zone. However, the property would, itself would remain split-zoned IP and agricultural rural reserve, and there would be issue with the lot size requirements with the agricultural rural reserve zone. The lot sizes, minimum lot size for that zone is 2.5 acres. So a little bit of background to the Steinsville zoning in general. The planning process employed in the development of Steinsville rural community area began in 1996 with the adoption and comprehensive plan. Then late in 2004, the principles of that plan were the foundation of the designated community planning effort. In October 2005, and then potentially in December 2005, that plan was adopted for the Plan Commission. And then in March of 2010, the Monroe County and town of Steinsville entered into a local, inter-local agreement regarding planning and zoning authority, and that's where that current zoning came about now where all along West Main Street is general business. The Steinsville Rural Community, excuse me, the Steinsville Area Rural Community Plan was updated to reflect the inclusion of the town's properties under the county's planning So here I have a couple items that show what the zoning came to be at the end of the inter-local agreement, or the initiation of it, I should say, 2010. The right map on the screen, that is what the current zoning is now, and you'll note that all along West Main Street is of this large chunk of general business. And the intention was to kind of promote general business uses, trying to revitalize the Steinsville area along West Main Street there. Here's the current zoning map. The parcels that are highlighted in light blue, those are the parcels that are in question for this rezone petition. Okay, here we have the West Main Street. These are all the parcels involved. You'll note that the stars are highlighting the parcels that are currently vacant, so that would be Part B. Okay, and here I have a table. All this is included in the packet as well. The blue is Part A and the red is Part B. You'll note that all the red is listed as vacant parcels. And you'll also note that this parcel right here, 8248 West Main Street, this parcel itself is operating as a residence, but also... as a residence, but also having a home daycare, both of which of those uses are pre-existing nonconforming, and specifically, the property owner here is still waiting on getting official permits because of the issue with the zoning. So, that is at least one specific case where a property owner is being impacted by the general business zone when they want to use residential-type uses. Here we have a site conditions map for the Part C, which is the fire station. Up here in the top of the map, that is the fire station's location where my cursor is, and this red polygon is the approximate location of, or dimensions of the proposed subdivision that is going to be coming down the pipeline. Here's some more exhibits of the proposed subdivision. Planning staff has received an initial application, although we're still working with the petitioner to get that cleaned up and to get it fully accepted. And then here we have a long list of consent from the property owners that are involved in this rezone. All of them also received the appropriate notifications. Planning staff made sure to provide notification to all the neighbors, as is required, but also, we noticed the petitioners themselves, just to ensure that everyone was aware and that everyone had an opportunity to come to the Plan Commission meeting and meeting this morning. I'll now ask you any questions.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I, actually, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that there was some concern expressed by members of the Plan Commission that I agree with, which is that we really need to have a better plan in place for Steinsville, and we're really missing that, but that's going to take some time to develop something like that. But because we don't want to entirely got the possibility of a commercial, of commercial venues, especially on Main Street, so that's just something to think about. Thank you.
So, I haven't overseen this kind of rezone before, so I could use a little coaching. Do I now ask for comments from the petitioners?
So, you need to ask for, you can ask the petitioner if they want to speak, and then you need to specifically ask for support in that, those who want to speak in favor and those who want to...
Okay, does, is, is there a petitioner present either in the Natu Hill Room or online who wishes to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of this petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Cats, I can't see if there's anybody online who wishes to speak, so, thank you. Okay, seeing none, I'll come back to the board. Is there any other further comment? So, is it okay to call for a vote then? Okay?
Yes.
So, then I will call for a vote on Ordnance 2023-8 for the Steinsville Rezone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Myers, for all your hard work on this.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have no appointments today, and I forgot my announcement sheet, of course, because it's been a day, but we do have upcoming blood drives, I know, at Ivy Tech, and if you give me a second, maybe I can get there to find them, but I'm just, nothing is going very fast today. I believe that there's one tomorrow, if I can find it, and then again on Friday, and then there are some in March, but as I'm looking for this, I want to remind everyone that if you are in need, you can contact your township trustee to help with assistance for rent, for utilities, for emergency medical bills. The, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. The blood drives are tomorrow, Thursday, February sixteenth, from one to six p.m., and Friday, February seventeenth, from ten to three p.m. at Ivy Tech. Then there's also one Wednesday, March the eighth, from ten to three, and Friday, March the tenth, from one to six. All these are at Ivy Tech, and you can register at redcross.org. This is vital. Each unit of blood that's donated can benefit up to three people, so it's a way to give, another way to give back to our community. Does anyone else have any announcements? Oh, yes, we have virtual office hours that we, that we hold six times a month. You can find those online and on the county's calendar. You can join us virtually, and those are not recorded, they're private conversations with the Commissioners.
And then I just want to note that we are still accepting applications for boards and commissions. We still have some vacancies.
Yes, thank you. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. We will return next week on February the twenty-second for the next Commissioners' meeting, and it's now ten forty. When should we return for our work session? Because we've got several items.
Ten to eleven.
Okay, ten fifty, is that okay? All right, we will be back in ten minutes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.